All right, welcome, everybody. We'll call to order the Grand Forks City Council meeting for Monday, July 18th, 2022. Get a roll call, please. Maureen.
Weigel.
Here.
Suski. Weber.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Veen. We have a.
Here.
Oh, thank you. We have a corner.
Thank you. Adam, 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. It's somewhere. Public what to stand. Nation, under God. Justice for all.
Just a couple of announcements today. For those of you baseball fans out there, we had a, I had a meeting with the Red River Pilots baseball team and their management. They had a kind of an abrupt end of the season, but they've reassured they're going to come back bigger and better for next year. So that will be exciting. I got to go over the grand opening of the Red Hydrant. So if you're an animal lover, particularly dogs, you have to check that out. I think it's a pretty good facility and going to be a great addition to the city of Grand Forks. And to city employees, should be a fun day tomorrow. We got the, the city picnic out at Riverside Park. So we'll be out there. I'll be serving up some, some burgers and hot dogs. So we'll, we'll get to see how that works out. So looking forward to that. That's all I've got for announcements. Oh, sorry. It's five to six, five to seven PM. So Brett, you're welcome to come out, too. With that, move on to two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1 is the presentation of the mayor's 2023 budget.
Thanks. I just got a few comments and I'll turn that back over to staff. The main focus again this year has been, been very similar to the years past. Focus is on public safety and infrastructure. We continue to invest heavily in improving our roads and we look to add an additional six police officers for 2023, which shows our commitment to those two items. Inflation has been a huge challenge, both capital, certainly fuel and supplies, but more importantly, it's been workforce. It's been the people. People not just for the city, but in the community in general are being squeezed by inflation. We've worked hard to raise wages to remain competitive as well as attack and retain our outstanding city staff. We were able to keep the mill rate flat, at least in this proposal, after two years of cuts despite the headwinds. The city's piece of the property tax pie continues to shrink as other political subdivisions are raising funds, most notably the school district. Overall, the general funding spending, general fund spending is up 6.26%, which falls well below the 9.1% inflation that we're seeing. Probably even more promising, utility rates are rising by less than 3%, which is even a larger margin on that. Challenging times, but it is a well-rounded budget. We're going to look at some quality of life investments coming up in 2023, specifically indoor activities for kids and families as a way to further draw workforce into our community and improve everyday life. And with that, on behalf of the city staff, happy to present the full 2023 budget for city council's review and thoughts and necessary edits. So thank you. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. You should have been provided in front of you tonight a detailed budget binder. We'll refer to several of these pages within your binder as we go through the presentation. We'll try to put that together in a clear and concise presentation for you. But as you look back to that binder, a good section that pulls it all together is that Budget Summary tab section as, as you go through the materials, while as table of contents has everything page numbered in there if there's a certain area you want to look at. And of course, we're already always here for your questions as well. We're going to go through salary and benefit review. Tangji's actually going to touch on that and give you any updates and review what she presented on June 20th. We'll go through, I will go through the funds in the listing in order here. And we're also going to bring Adam up for a part of the presentation to, to talk to some improvements we're looking at in the city hall council chambers here on third floor. And then I'll wrap it up and go through what's to come. But for now, I'm going to turn it over to Tangji.
Thank you, Maureen. Good evening, Mayor Bocinski, council president Sandy, members of the council. I'll provide, I'll be providing another look at the 2023 salary plan and benefits as part of our budgeting process. And thank you for your opening words, Mayor Bocinski. So as, as all employers are aware, it's become increasingly difficult to recruit and retain employees. I've listed out a few of the city's updates that we've incorporated into our compensation system and hiring process to increase our competitiveness. The city has focused on creating career paths for employees. So there's room for growth and development with our city employees. Our water department has incorporated 5% pay increases once certification tests have been passed with the state. And we have increased starting wages with the bus operators, diner ride drivers, and our water operators to increase our applicant pool. As we have increased the starting, oh, additionally, as we have incorporated an employee referral bonus to any employee that refers an applicant that gets hired to a full-time position. In regards to the salary plan, let me remind the council, especially our new members, that we have a salary plan that is primarily market-based with a performance component. We have updated our comparator cities just a few years back to the 12 comparator cities across North Dakota, South Dakota, and Minnesota. And we did have to adjust from those comparator cities this year and removed Duluth as they have several unsettled union contracts. And we didn't want that to skew our market data. Also, Rapid City implemented a new compensation plan that includes large salary pay bands, which, when plugged into our own salary system, skews the data for benchmark positions. So we eliminated the use of those positions that were affected. If you would take a look, this slide includes our salary plan increase for 2023, which is at 4.13%. The, this slide also includes a historical look at our salary plan requests over the last 10 years. As you can see, the 4.13% equates to $1.2 million. I'll show you how this breaks down in the next slide. So this is a pie chart illustrating how those funds, that 1.2 is broken down. If you look at the yellow portion, those are positions that we had to bump up to get to just our entry-level wages. So we had to add $306,000 to the salary plan to make sure that all of our positions are paid at at least 80% of their pay ra, pay ra, range, excuse me. And then the big portion, the other big portion is the blue portion, and that's 73%. These are market adjustments that are going to happen within our pay grades. And what's left then for performance increase is just 3% of that overall cost. This is a look at how that affects all funds. You can see that it mirrors the general fund. So all positions had market movement with the exception of two. So we, we need to pay close attention to those, to that breakout and those market increases. So the next slide breaks out our market and performance split over the last 10 years. And as you can see, there's very few allocated dollars in 2023 to performance and also as well as the last few years. One was the COVID year, that was 2021. And 2022 had approximately 30% allocated to performance, which is a good portion. And then 2020 had just a sliver of performance dollars also included. We do need to pay attention to those performance dollars and note that our plan is designed to be both a market and performance-based plan. This slide breaks down which promotions and positions have been incorporated into the general fund for 2023. Once again, we've incorporated many promotions as part of career path development and succession planning. Also included in the 2023 budget are six police officers that the mayor referenced as part of a cops hiring grant, where the city will pay just 25% of the cost of the officers in year one and then gradually increase the share over the next three years. The total cost for 2023 equates to approximately 1.5 new positions in the police department. Additionally, there are two 911 dispatcher trainees budgeted for 2023. The city's cost share of these positions is currently 58.1%. And finally, there's a civil engineering specialist position added to the engineering department. Most of the costs associated with this position will be offset by stormwater funds. This slide lists out the promotions for all other funds. Once again, promotions are a key factor in defining career paths and creating succession plans. So this slide is a look at our competitive benefit offerings. Hiring and retaining employees often comes down to the benefits, and these are our two biggest benefits with the city that set us apart. Our defined pension plan through N D. Pers is an excellent benefit that draws applicants from the private sector. And thanks to council leadership, we have implemented the public safety retirement plan in 2021 for our law enforcement and fire suppression personnel. Several years ago, with our health insurance, we broke away from N D. Pers and purchased private coverage under Blue Cross Blue Shield, which resulted into significant savings. As we keep looking to improve our, our benefits for employees, we have employed the assistance of Brown and Brown Consulting Group. We're hoping that they'll negotiate the superior health insurance contracts for our employees at a reduced cost and would like for the council to consider, or we'd like to have that savings be reallocated to performance dollars under the salary plan if, if their proposal results in savings. Each percent saved will equate to approximately 32,000. We have budgeted for a 7% increase on health insurance fund for 2023's budget. Also included in the budget is municipal judge. Our new, newly elected judge is going to be 50% time or slightly over, and we've built in health insurance for 2023 for that position. So you can find the salary plan in its entirety attached to the June 20th agenda, and we will be attaching an updated version with the budget's preliminary approval on August 1st. With that recap, I'll pass the presentation back to Maureen to present on the mayor's budget.
Thank you, Tangji, and thank you, Mayor, for your opening overview. I'll continue by going through here, included in the 2023 budget, really prioritize investments on people, public safety, infrastructure, and technology. You've already heard much of the, the people component that Tangji just went through with all of you. We'll touch on various aspects of, of these investments that'll tie in as we go through this presentation. So a broad overview in total, looking at all funds, the total city budget is $226.6 million. You can see on this graphic how that breaks out. And much of the discussion centers on general fund due to property tax, but you can see in when you're looking at a, a pie of total budget, that's just makes up 20% of your budget in, in whole. And then looking at the expenses and how they break out in total, that 226 million breaks out between the personnel maintenance operations is your other current debt service capital. But the, the point that I want to maybe point out here is personnel services makes up 28% of your whole. You're going to see a much different graphic when you look at specifically to general fund as far as personnel services. The other thing I want to point out in this graph is the transfers out. Different funds work together within the city budget. For instance, we have prairie dog funds budgeted that will come in, but then it's transferred out to be spent into another budget. So when I look at pulling out and the total numbers exclusive of those transfers out, you're really, you're looking at 197.5 million compares to 193.2 million the year before, a 2.28% increase. The value of a mill is estimated around 254,000, up from 243 the year prior. 1.74% of this coming from growth and the remainder from revaluation. As the mayor had stated in his opening remarks, this budget looks to hold those mills flat at 97.02 mills. Starting with the general fund then in total, we look to a budget of 45.8 million. The revenues, as you can see, are broken out. The major primary sources of revenue for your general fund are your property taxes and sales tax and also your charges for services. And then looking at the expense and how that breaks out, we've done this in two different ways, both by category and by function. This is comparable that I mentioned in that previous slide and looking at the total budget. When you look specifically at the general fund, it's primarily people. Your wages and benefits make up 78% of the, of the general fund. And then on the right, you can see primarily over 50% or 53% is public safety. So you have your police, fire, emergency management, the city's share of public safety answering point is all rolled into the general fund. The general fund is really your primary operating fund for the city, and that's where this flows through. And then also, if you add in your streets, engineering, health, along with public safety, that's 76% of your general fund with 24% in general government. Some of the items included in the budget, we continue to fund services through the C V I C of 215,000, social detox, 95,000. We maintain the school resource officer program with the schools for two new city council members. And as a reminder to existing, we share in approximately 50-50% cost share with the school district. And these five school resource officers place one in each high school and middle school. So that's where those are housed. We do have, as Tangji stated, six additional police officers included in here and have applied for a grant to help offset that cost and two additional PSAP. Our share of PSAP currently is 58%. We continue the internship program. And one of the other big bullet points is we really wanted to get hold on funding public safety capital and, in our capital reserve. So when looking at the overall general fund and how this flows together, not just looking at an annual look, but looking out, we, we do this six-year running projected cash balance, project out a revenue or expense to see where we're at. You just saw the audit committee about 27%. We have an estimate built in here about 24%. It'll be right around that 25% probably. We want to make sure we don't drop under that 18% minimum threshold per policy. If you do go below 18%, we just need to show a plan of replenishing those funds within a three-year time period according to your policy. This, the assumptions are listed. We've listed, referred to the page number that's in your binder that includes this, but we do have the six officers. We have the phased-in funding over four years from the grant dollars and the two PSAP employees. We hold mills the same in this projection and no additional FTE besides those that I just referred to. Moving to special revenue funds, we have loan and stabilization fund. Special revenue funds are those funds used for a special purpose. So loan and stabilization, just as it sounds, to stabilize taxes. We're bringing in $250,000 to the general fund to meet expenditures here. We do, and we'll talk more about this later, bringing in 1.48 million toward public billing fund. Adam's going to speak a little bit later about the space that you're sitting in tonight and, and look at a possible renovation. We do also project some use of these funds over the projection. Our public safety and answering point is our Fund 2104. We have a, we share that cost with city, county, U and D, Altru, and our share is 58.1% of that. And our 911 fund pays into here as well. The library is assuming no change in mills. We currently have 8.8 mills going to fund the operations of the library. We also have a library capital maintenance fund. They have budgeted 500,000 for children's department remodel as part of this budget. The Joanie Bequest cash that was given a few years ago, that still sits there, it's about $710,000. And they have a, an designated cash in there, about 800, 890, around 808,000, sorry. And then the health grant funds is just used to track our health grants, and you can see listed there, the grants housed there. Our street water sales tax fund is used to account for the half-cent sales tax that was most recently approved for streets and water. We do budget 6.35 million estimated collections. That mirrors the 2021 actual is what we have there, with 2 million going toward water and 4.1 million going to street infrastructure. We have built up some sales tax funds in there that hasn't been spent yet. Part of what you'll see in your street infrastructure, CIP, is bringing in 3 million for street projects and bringing those funds into this budget. And then 250,000 goes toward street maintenance materials and leases in our general fund street department. 2145 is your city special assessment fund. That just tracks the special assessment the city pays on city property and no change there. So then the prairie dog fund, you know, somebody said to me, why do they call it prairie dog? But years ago, the state included municipalities in a, you know, part to share in the proceeds from the oil gas tax for these underground projects. So we do have in the, the, based on the price of oil, we feel comfortable to assume that we're going to be collecting in this biennium of about $12 million. So we do have it built in here and projecting out use of prairie dog funds, but the majority going to our street infrastructure and also for wastewater. Our 2199 tracks our community development. Maybe the biggest thing to point out there is that we do have that 36.42% coming in here, assuming the sale of the corporate sale, corporate center, sorry. And then ARPA, that was previously approved in the 22 budget. We do have 100,000. That's the third year of mental health matters that's built in. Animal control is the city's impound. There's a half mill dedicated toward that, as well as we have some general fund dollars going there to help operate. And that's based on a 3% increase. And then the visit greater Grand Forks, formerly known as C V B, is our Fund 2187. That's really a pass-through for us. That motel hotel tax that's collected gets forwarded to them for, for their purpose. That was hit greatly during COVID. That's, we do see that rebounding now. You did loan help through some cash flow issues there, and they are paying that back annually or five years, but it, it's a welcome sign that things are rebounding. Looking then at your economic development fund, 2163, we have, as before, mirrored 2021 actual collections, which means 2.17 million sales tax collections budgeted here. Just as a reminder and for two new council members, the way this sales tax is allocated of the 1% general sales tax, 18 and a half percent goes toward the economic development fund, and that's where the 2.17 million comes. For consideration in this budget, we've talked a lot about the beacon over the last year in the public space. This does bring in beautification funds to this budget year for consideration for use to help fill the gap on that beacon project. Other than that, we have the same items as usual, Grand Forks Air Force Base enhancements, the E D C arts, Safe Kids, special events, beautification, human needs. What I will point out is the mayor has included some increases in here for arts and events. It brings it up from about 130,000 up to 175. And human needs and beautification brings the budget allocation from around 130,000 to 150. And then moving on to the police department grants, that's our Fund 2170. And that's where we house those cops grants with the general fund share of that coming in here to help support. And then the mental health matters is also housed here. The public building fund, we do have, overall, the mills aren't changing, but we are putting a quarter mill into here, taking from another area, which you'll see that breakout in your binder, for a total of 3.75 mills to make this fund sustainable. Something for consideration that Adam's going to be talking about next here with you is looking at remodeling this city council chambers, this third floor city hall space to better utilization. We do look to loan and stabilization funds, that cash balance, in order to internally finance that, pay for the construction of that and pay ourselves back in, from the public billing fund. There is some debt in there that matures, it rolls off in 2026, and then we can pay ourselves back. But with that, I'm going to let Adam go through this proposal with you.
Mayor, good evening, Mayor, city council members. During our preliminary meetings on the budget, the conversation of upgrades to the city council chambers came up, and it was asked if we would visit with J L G and take a look at a couple of different ideas as to what, what would it cost to refresh this space? That would be technology, security, furnishings, finishes, or to look at just utilizing this space in a more efficient way. So we met with J L G, excuse me, and the plan that you see in front of you here is kind of a preliminary design that they came up with to better utilize the space. It increases seating, increases some of the view lines, participation lines, if you think of it that way, centers the room in a way where we can have monitors behind you, opens up the windows behind you, so it can let in some natural light and kind of bring back some of the natural look of city hall. So just to give you an idea, here's a existing floor plan. Here's kind of a proposed. The proposed would also update the bathroom facilities on this floor, which are severely kind of under code for size specifications. Creates some better pathways for getting people in and out of the, the building while offering some space for either a conference area or storage. So some preliminary costs, and there, these are just budget numbers based on some projects that J L G is currently either in development with or working on. They took a look at some of the square footage costs based on two other projects. They've built in some escalation costs just with where inflation is right now, put in some contingency costs, as well as 35% cost for technology, security, F F E, some of the, some of the other pieces to that. So I know Maureen and Mike have already found some ways to work this in to the budget. So that's where we're at with this floor and remodel for 2023. I'll hand it back to Maureen.
Thank you, Adam. So this slide may look a little cumbersome, but it just shows all the different pieces that make up a C I P, a capital improvement plan. Maybe the one thing to point out here, the whole right side of this pie chart really is streets. So it'll show you, you know, we're, we're trying to put a lot of money into, into streets to get, to get some movement there. And this just breaks out where those capital improvement plan dollars are targeted, with streets being the largest, and then facilities as well as utility and equipment. And you can see that breakdown for the total of 71.5 million. So our street infrastructure fund is Fund 4815. Refer to this a, a bit ago, but we are bringing in some sales tax dollars that was in the cash balance from that half percent sales tax, as well as the existing or current year sales tax and highway user tax dollars for, that adds up to a total of 4.14.3 million in the 23 budget, along with 10 million bringing in from prairie dog allocation and then some bridge reserve cash. Much more detail to this can be found in the C I P section of your budget binder, but this just lists a few of those, of those projects and the cash flow. But this, thanks to David Engineering, I think this does a really good job of color coding by year, just all the different roadway projects in the city in the six-year C I P. And the graphic just, it just gives a good visual of all parts of the city are touched in this six-year time period and really squares. in this six-year time period and really squares the city. We have a capital project fund for a flood protection system and there are some projects budgeted for 2023. The funding source for this are flood special assessments as well as the use tax flows in here. And then our Fund 4800 is where we house the capital vehicle replacement schedule for general fund vehicles, as you can see, fire, police, streets, engineering inspections. This budget gets us back to, to funding that. Really, the, the idea behind this is instead of having big fluctuations one year to the next on, when you have to, for instance, an aerial fire truck or some large piece of large vehicle, this really takes those fluctuations out and we want to be able to budget a more consistent annual amount. And we haven't fully funded this for a few years, so this budget gets back on track with that. Our enterprise funds, at the end of going through some of these funds here, I'm going to show you the impacts on the utility bill and what that means to the user. But our sanitation fund is our Fund 5100. The way these slides work is I show the beginning cash, your estimated revenue and expense, and finally, your in and cash. And then to the bottom left, not just that operating cash, we can see what's in construction reserve and what's legally restricted for debt. We do, in the sanitation fund, assume a 4% rate increase here and in residential and landfill and inert. One thing to point out, and I think we were going to put a bullet point on this slide, but it didn't make it, we do want to highlight the drop off, the free drop off four times a year through our sanitation fund, if you're a city resident. Wastewater Fund, we do have a 3% residential, 4.5% industrial, commercial figured in here. Like the other, you can see the annual revenue expense of about 12.7 million with the cash balances and then the construction reserve and the legally restricted down to your left. The Water Fund, same here, but we're looking at a 2% rate increase in water. We do have some construction reserve cash there and some that's legally restricted, but your annual revenue and expense balance at about 16.3 million. The Stormwater Fund has about 1.5 million with revenues and expense around 3.6. We do look at to, to bring the revenue to that to meet expense, we have a 4% stormwater and 2% flood protection, greenway maintenance rate increase here. And finally, your mosquito fund, you pay $3 a month for that service. We don't have any rate increases figured into this fund. In total, then, an estimate of a six, a family with, using 6,000 gallons of water a month, this is how it would shake out with the slides that I just went through. In total, then, on a monthly basis, that would come to 2.74% or $2.67 a month. Maybe just a couple of things to point out with our public transit. It is, we do have a lot of federal money coming into our public transit system. You can see the annual revenue expense around that 4 million, but what I wanted to point out here is that your capital is 80% federal share, 20% local, and the operations is a 50/50 split with the federal. And the local share comes from property tax on that. Public Transit Fund, we have 4.65 mils going here. And your Dial-A-Ride has one mil dedicated. Same thing here, it's an 80/20, 80% federal capital, 20% local and 50/50 on operations. Alara Center, thank you to, we had a really good turnout at our joint meeting. I thought that was really good discussion. You can see the events that are assumed in the, in the budget that Anna and her team have put together to estimate a profit of just over $100,000 for operations. On the capital side, we had a lot of discussion there. Thanks to Mike for running numerous scenarios on this and the portfolio. Some large ticket items came in even higher than what we had budgeted, so we've increased and adjusted that for inflation. One of the big ones is the roof that's coming up here. We've done a lot of talk with portfolios and how long past sunset can we get? We're estimating, you know, about the year 2044 based on what we can set aside and live off the interest and principal. But what's also been introduced is this quality of life and other facilities to partner with that ongoing need. Your Job Development Authority Fund is 5996. There's a detailed projection of this in your Economic Development Fund. Also, you'll see the page numbers referred to, your beginning cash and ending cash is listed there. Some of the things, some of the cash that's listed is also restricted for loans and other types of balances. We also continue to fund over a 10-year period in annual amount toward the Nissler College Business, Business College as far as part of this portfolio, as we continue to work through it, is your high-risk loans. As far as the tech accelerator, what we have figured in here is really a startup year, tech accelerator built in to build over a three-year time period as that, as that grows. We also assume the Corporate Center sale in 2022 here. Municipal Parking, then, the thing I wanted to point out here in response to concerns with safety and security, there is 160,000 from the reserve cash budgeted here for cameras in both the central and corporate grounds, and they'll continue to monitor a plan for our parking fund. But as I recap here in the mayor's data, this, we have an average salary increase of 4.13%. It does include six additional police officers, offset partially by that grant, assuming, assuming we get the grant approved, two PSAP dispatcher trainees, holding mills, the same. You can see what you would pay per month on a median-sized home or value home, $77 a month. And then the utilities would come to 2.74% increase or a $2.67 increase per month based on the proposed recommendations. As we move forward, next Monday, we do have a meeting preceding, committed the whole of the Grand Forks, East Grand Forks Wastewater Interconnect Advisory Committee. That will be held here in council chambers at 4:30. We'll go through your, I'm available for your questions now until, if you, tonight or after tonight, between August 1st, but we look to bring forward a preliminary approval of a budget on August 1st. Within, once that is given preliminary approval for the two new council members, and a reminder to all, you can decrease the budget past preliminary approval, but you cannot increase. So once you have preliminary approval and before final, you can decrease, you just can't increase the budget. Because what we're going to do is we're going to give the preliminary approval of budget numbers to the county by August 10th, and then they'll be sending out estimated property tax statements. Every household gets that, and they do this on behalf of all the taxing entities. So they need to do that by August 31st, and we come back here for final approval, public hearing on September 19th. With that, I would open it up for questions, and if you can't think of your question tonight, I'm available, phone or email, or stop.
Thank you, Ms. Thorstad, and thank you to the finance team and the HR team for all the work they've done over the last few months. With that, certainly now would be time for some comments or questions early on. Everyone's kind of seeing this for the first time. We've got a couple of weeks to, to work on it, so. Mr. President Sandy, please.
Thorstad, could you send out a meeting notice for that wastewater interconnect meeting for next week or Mr. Phelan, somebody, so that that hits our calendars?
We'll make sure that gets sent out.
I appreciate all the hard work and heavy lifting that's gone into this, Mayor. Looks like you've spent a fair amount of time with the, with our finance staff. Certainly, devil's always in the details and looking forward to digging in and having more conversations.
Thank you. Mr. Weber, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a few questions tonight, if I may. I'm concerned about the limited amount for salary increases for, for performance at just 3%. We're already limited in the, the amount of raise, and I appreciate that there's been a lot of really great work going into this budget, but it feels to me like we continue to lose ground to key comparable competitor cities, especially in relation to recruitment and retention. And, and that has a, that has a cost. It's expensive when we don't have the, the staff we need. In relation to that, six new police officers, and I realize, or I believe, that most of that is being paid for through some federal grants initially. Is that correct?
So, Mr. Weber, Mayor, members of the city council, the grant funds 25% a year over and, or, sorry, our share is 25% the first year, and it grows by 25% over a four-year period. So after four years, we're fully funding the six officers. So the grant money is coming in for that difference.
And, and that, that's a, an increase, an increased expense that we're locking ourselves into over the next
That is correct.
Five years. I, I mean, I, I would imagine that we could make some argument that six police officers make us safer and that 12 would maybe make us even safer, not, why not 20? At, at what point is that necessary? And have we been experiencing an increase in crime rates? What is the justification for increase in, in police officers? I don't want to make an enemy of the police department. I'm very proud of our, our police department. We have a fantastic police department. But in, in what way do we justify this increase, especially at a time where, I don't believe we've had increase in, I Deputy Chief Mackey, good to see you, sir. I, I don't believe we've had a dramatic increase in crime, but I, I know that we've had dramatic increase in the need for engineering services, for instance. So I'm, I'm wondering about that, and I'll just leave it at that for a moment.
Sure. Councilmember Weber and councilmembers and Mayor Bochensky, we've seen a significant increase in calls for service. Each year, we're seeing new highs in calls for service. The latest information we had put us at a little over 52,000 calls per year. If you go back 10 years, we're at about 41,000, 42,000 calls. We have increased staffing over the years, but we're at the level now where our officers per shift that are required to work needs to increase. To be able to do that, our shift relief factor shows us we have to really be at about 100 officers total. We're at 92 now. So this six officers we're requesting through the grant only partially gets us to that level that would be able to allow us to fully implement the required seven officers per shift. That doesn't even take into consideration the obligate, excuse me, obligated and unobligated time the officers have. Currently, our officers are obligated, if I recall the number correctly, I, I could be off a little bit, roughly 89% of the time, meaning they're on a call, they're doing paperwork, they're not doing proactive police measures, a vast majority of the time that they're, they're working. International Association Chiefs of Police recommends we be at 33% obligated time. We're far from that. We did a staffing study that showed that to get to that level, I think the number we had now was 147 sworn officers with the current level of calls for service that we have. So we're looking at trying ultimately to get to 107 officers. That would get us that minimum number of officers to allow us to have that shift relief factor, having seven officers on duty at any given time per shift. That would be that 100 number. Once we get up to 107 officers, that would get us that obligated, unobligated time of roughly 50%. So about 50% of the officer's time would be able to be satisfied doing proactive patrol, working in the community, traffic enforcement and that sort of thing. We have seen some increases in, in crime as well, but I don't specifically have those numbers handy. I can certainly forward our annual report to the members of the council, but what is really affecting us at this point, in addition to the, to the increases in, in crime, would be the specific number of increased calls for service at over 52,000 calls per year. And again, that's been a steady increase of several percent. I think it was 17% over the last five years. So that's kind of where we're at, looking for personnel is trying to get enough officers on the street to ensure that we can get to all these calls for service in a relatively timely manner.
Very good, and I, I have no interest in arguing with you about any of this, but let me push back a little bit. It's, it's handy to have an accreditation body that oversees, that you report to, so that they can say things like, you should have 147 officers. Nobody's proposing at this point that we should have a 50% increase in our, our police force, right?
Right, no. We feel satisfied. International Association Chiefs of Police, they kind of look at a global perspective. Here's kind of what we recommend globally. We're trying to fit the Grand Forks local model into what we need, and with our current calls for service, you know, we really should be right around that 107 mark, but even just getting to that 100 or close to 100 would get us to where we can staff our shifts with enough officers to ensure that we're not relying on overtime usage and so forth. Once we get to that 100 officers total, that's when, as long as our calls for service continue where they're at and don't continue to increase, that's where we would be able to not have to worry about using overtime to call in officers to fill the required shifts, which unfortunately, we do have a lot of overtime dedicated to just filling our shifts at this point.
I remember one time having it explained to me that we have the, the great benefit of not only having our, our police force and sheriffs, but the, the university police department, Border Patrol, that there's a number of different sources that we can draw and there's, there can be synergies with that, but the, the calls for service are concerning. And you mentioned that there's some limited increase in crime, but the calls for service have gone up dramatically. I'm guessing that a lot of these calls for service are mental health-related issues, things along those lines?
We have seen increases in mental health issues, welfare checks, suicidal subjects, that sort of thing. But as I recall, we've also seen increases in domestic disputes and assaults and, and weapons violations and things that are a little bit more concerning as well.
I know that a, a number of cities have experimented with embedding social workers to help with, with some of these issues to great benefit, freeing up officers' time because to have an officer trained in 40 hours of behavioral health issues is not the same as a, a social worker who has, you know, a couple thousand hours of, of training in their degree. Is, is that something that we're looking at at all?
Yeah, we've actually already kind of started doing things like that, not quite like on the national level where social workers may be actually responding to calls, but what we have in, particularly when we had Mental Health Matters within the building, but the staff member there has taken another position. But we do have partnerships with Northeast Human Services. We have officers that specialize in mental health issues, and when we have our patrol officers dealing with a certain person multiple times, our mental health officers start getting involved. They start working with Northeast, many other resources within the region as well to try to find a solution that works for that particular person and try to offer resources that maybe that person would be willing to accept. Many of these social workers do respond with those mental health officers, and they do site visits and, and that sort of thing. So we're kind of doing it, but not maybe quite as formal as some other areas, but we've had great success with it and it's something we are interested in continuing with as well.
I know when I've done ride-alongs over the course of a shift, the number of calls for service, each time I went out, the vast majority of those calls for service were the same person that we would have to go to time and time again, and there just wasn't a good solution from a law enforcement perspective to deal with, with their, their needs at the time, right? But let's assume that, that we, we need additional officers. In that case, having this federal grant is very helpful in helping us offset some of the costs for the first period at least. With that, I think that there was, on Slide 11, some discussion of savings, potential savings, and those could be diverted to additional funding for pay-for-performance?
Yes, our partnership
That went by pretty quickly, so if you
Yep, yep, I'll hit that again. We have entered into a partnership with Hayes &amp; Hayes Group. They're a consulting group that works with health insurance coverage for the school jurisdiction they're kind, they're already consulting for. they're kind, they're already consulting for. So we've taken them on, and they are going to crunch some numbers for us and hopefully come up with a self-insured model for us to propose to the pension and health and pension committee and switch our plan and hopefully result in some savings. Currently, we've budgeted a 7% increase for 2023. We'll see, we don't actually get our
A 7% increase for?
Health insurance premiums.
Oh, okay.
And so we won't actually get that number until the end of August. And so things will happen pretty quickly after that. And if we can see any savings, we'd like to propose that they get diverted into the performance element of the salary plan.
And if there's a 5% increase instead of 7%, then we could be tripling the amount that's currently available for pay-for-performance. This would be wonderful. If it happens, it'd be great news. I know that, as we've discussed before, Fargo had a mid-year just increase in city staff because of the inflation numbers. We've thrown out Rapid City because they were no longer comparable because they had such a large increase in city payroll. Did I read that wrong?
So actually, what we did with Rapid City is they implemented a new salary plan, and those salary plans included large ranges for their positions, too large to actually be comparable within our salary plan.
Okay.
So, you know, 50,000 to 150,000. That skewed our numbers when we were trying to find a market, a market value for a particular position. So we had to eliminate those for the benchmark positions.
Okay. But I do, I believe that our current range, even though it's narrower than Rapid City's, our current range, it's very few of our city staff who are on the top end of that range, right?
That is correct. So our current salary plan pays, our pay bands are between 80% and 120%. 80 and 100 is where we can hire positions, and the 100% of our, is our midpoint, and that's market average. So that's where all of our 12, our benchmark data comes in. So we measure against those 12 entities, and then wherever the average is for that police officer position, that's where our midpoint, our 100% is going to fall. So the only way to get above that 100% is by performance dollars. Market will not get you past the 100%.
Okay. Thanks. I know, Slide 13, it's one of our top priorities. Our people are a top priority. I would love to see those numbers, that we go beyond the rhetoric and more fully fund that, that priority. Because again, it's incredibly expensive for us when we don't have enough engineers on staff to do the work, and then we have to farm that out and pay more than it would cost us to do it in-house. And I'd hope that in our desire to hold mills steady, that we, we don't lose sight of all of that. Slide 19.
Mr. Weber.
Yes, Mr. Phelan.
Just because we're going to come up with preliminary approval coming up here in a couple of weeks. And so, I mean, out of today's discussion, if it's something, I'll say just by general consensus, is that if you would like to look at alternative solutions to add funds, we certainly can, and that's what we're asking for feedback today. If there are some things that you'd really like us to look at between now and then and for your further review as city council, that's really what we're here in, trying to give you an early look in advance of that August first date. And so if that's something the city council wants to do, we'll look at some alternative strategies that would be reasonable, that we could sustain over time if you would want. So we value that feedback, and if there's a general consensus on the city council, we'll come up with some, if there are there, some alternative solutions.
It's a good transparent, inclusive process, and I thank you, Mayor, for that and city staff. And so I'm trying to, with my comments, I'm expressing my interest for exactly what you just proposed. Just please.
So as you speak, or anyone who speaks, we'll write them down and come back with alternative solutions, working through Mayor Bochensky.
Thanks. Starting with Slide 19, I was looking for the, what is it called? The human needs funding? And I was waiting for it, waiting for it, and I think you may have even tried to catch my eye when it was maybe on Slide 26 where that's actually mentioned. This is something that was approved three years ago, and for various reasons, we have not yet funded it as a city, in part because there was a lot of federal money coming in for that. But am I to understand that we are providing some funding for human needs in this proposed budget?
Yes, I believe we have 100, and let me just double-check this. I believe we have 150,000 budgeted.
Okay. And that's the amount that I think we've always agreed on.
150,000 for human needs.
Right. And will that, will there be a COLA applied to that in future years? Because 150 is what we approved three years ago, and we've not increased that at all.
We do have an inflationary factor built into these. It's either 2% or 3%.
Okay. And thanks. And I know that there has been a lot of federal money come in, but there are tremendous needs in the community for, for the agency's department, for the agency serving those needs. Thanks. Slide 21, the, I don't know if, I think it was 911 or PSAP, but I think it was 911, is funded by phone lines, number of phone lines? Does that include cell phones, or is that just land?
Yes.
It does include cellphone lines now.
Yeah, it's all phone lines pay into the 911 fund used for infrastructure of the PSAP center, and they also pay a share into the operations of the whole public safety management.
Wonderful. It's exciting to see some possible plans for upgrading this space here. I think most important to me, and I believe to many others, is the sound system. So I know there's some money in there for technology. It would be great to have it prettier in here, and natural light would be a wonderful thing as well. But we're getting accused of some crazy things like intentionally messing with the sound system. And please, that's not happening. When we had the attorney come and talk about CFIUS, I think it was just the speaker that the individual was using that was coming through our system. So if you're looking for feedback, the sound system is, would be the highest priority for me in a renovation of this room. Slide 40, stormwater, a 4% increase for stormwater. Is that residential and industrial equally?
Yes, it's all.
Okay. And Slide 46 mentions the tech accelerator. Do we have a dollar amount or an estimate on what that amount is at this point? And that's just for operating, right?
Right. And this is something, if you, we have a very draft startup year budget put together that I can send to you. It's a work in progress as we, you know, get people into the space and look to get that fully functional. But we do have it built in, and like I said, over a three-year period, you know, making it a sustainable operation.
And would that be a service person sitting at the, by the entryway of the tech accelerator? What kind of operating expenses are we intending to cover with that?
Yeah, I can take that. I think it's, yeah, it's a little bit to be determined. I think we can fill in a lot of that with current staff, some of the community development and planning department, and the rest of the, is there someone there that's permanently at the desk, and how does that run? But there's a governance board that probably makes some of those decisions. That's in the process of being formed for the tech accelerator.
Very good. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Any other, any further questions or comments for council at this time?
Mayor Bochensky, one quick question.
Mr. Bean, please.
Yeah, on the city council remodeling, I just carried that forward. Maybe, Adam, you know, one of the things I've seen that other cities have addressed a lot is, is just in technology. And my question, how mu, I know I think you used a percentage or something for the technology estimate. I would just request, take a good look at that, because I think that can be quite expensive if we do the level of upgrade we probably should do.
Yeah, Mayor, I can address that. Councilmember Bean, the budget numbers are just somewhat in there as placeholders. The 35% that was put in was the estimate that GLG got from their other two projects. The total cost of those projects, once they were completed, how much of the project went into technology, and that's what they pulled out for. Doesn't mean that we're locked into it. It doesn't mean that construction costs may not be cheaper and technology more. But the plan moving forward would be new mic systems, new lighting, new sound system, and we would want your input on those needs and wants as we walk through that planning.
Thank you.
Mr. Weber, please follow up on that. Technology means all the things that you just said. What about security? Is there any technology or physical aspects that could lead to security in these chambers and the rest of the building?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Weber, we are, I will be bringing a security plan for city council. We, you allocated ARPA funds for some access control and surveillance. It's probably nine months ago or longer now. We are working on that. If you, if you walk through second floor remodel, you'll notice that there's access control. We built that into that remodel. So we will expand that project to the entire city hall, and that will include some surveillance cameras for public areas, access control for better badging and entrance into some areas. So that will be, that would be expanded into this room with the remodel as well.
Real good. Right, at present, I think one of the places that gets a great deal of traffic is the finance department. Has there been any enhancement, anything done in relation to security for the finance department at present?
I can address partially. We have. We did, when we did the first floor remodel, added a fourth window. So we try to steer most of the traffic from the public to the utility billing windows, and then we have the other window for all other items. Still can come into our office, but it's just one more step where I think it helps in that security area.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weber. All right, we will move on from item 2.1 to item 3. It looks like there is no public hearing, second reading of ordinances today, so we will move on to action items. All right, we did have the audit committee, so we'll pull item 4.0. I'm assuming Mr. President Sandy would like to pull item 4.1 and Mr. Weber for city council committee assignments. Is that correct?
Sure.
Okay. We do have a new ordinance in 4.3 as well. So I've got 4.0, 4.1, and 4.3 to pull. Is there any other items that council wants to have pulled for this evening for further discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'd look to move item 4.2, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, 4.10, 4.11, 4.12, 4.13, 4.14, 4.15, and 4.16 for approval.
I apologize. Could we hear, and maybe this is already being planned, 4.3?
Yeah, 4.3 has been pulled. I did list everything except for 4.0, 4.1, and 4.3.
But that, on move approval?
Got a motion to approve from Vice President Weber and a second from President Sandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That motion carries unanimously. So we're on to 4.0.
All right. 4.0 is the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended December 31st, 2021. Mayor council members, we just met as an audit committee, and each year, we go through an annual audit, and brought forward is the report from the auditors, Brady Marks. It was approved at the audit committee to approve the report. It was an unmodified opinion, which means our financial statements got a clean opinion with no findings, and we would just recommend that you move forward the audit committee's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Dorst. Any further comments or motions for item 4.0?
No.
Got a motion to approve from President Sandy, a second from Mr. Cavami. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously.
4.1 is city hall, or city council committee assignments.
I guess I'd open it up to, President Sandy or Vice President Weber had any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my thanks to all the council members and, of course, Ms. Osowski and Ms. Lunskey for their working, trying to find appropriate committees that they would appreciate and be able to lend some expertise to. We've settled on Ms. Osowski joining the Board of Health, County Planning and Zoning, and the Growth Fund, Ms. Lunskey joining the Library Board, the CDBG Action Committee, and the MPO Executive Committee. So otherwise, essentially, the rest of us have maintained our previous membership. Mr. Weber is leaving the Growth Fund, and Mr. Wyville is joining the Growth Fund. Otherwise, it's basically the same, and I think it's a, it's a real strong team. So I appreciate everyone's willingness to serve. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Weber, any comments? Otherwise, we're just looking for a motion to approve that, assuming everybody is good with their assignments.
On move approval.
Got a motion to approve. Second from, motions from Mr. Weber, second from Mr. Cavami. Further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
4.3 is introduction of ordinance relating to bird scooters.
All right, we're going to hand this over to Mr. Gostad to give us some insight on this, and then, so I don't forget, we do have a comment on the item, so if someone could remind me. Thank you.
Sure. This was instigated by the entity that wanted to bring in a scooter rental, electric scooter rental system. And so I actually had my partner, Marion Knutson, assist in drafting the ordinances. They're really, first is 8-1801, the executor, that provision deals generally with electric scooter use within the city, not with the rental program itself. A couple of changes I wanted to point out that I noted as I was getting ready for tonight, just some internal reference changes that I noted. It's at proposed 8-1803 subsection 13. There's an internal reference error that should have read 8-1804. And then in 8-1804, the language should read, "The use of electric scooters shall be permitted on the following roadways." And you'll notice that I wasn't exactly sure where you wanted these to be allowed to be used. So we gave an example. I'd look for some guidance from the city council tonight. For example, if electric scooters used within, on a designated bike path, and then possible areas within downtown, and also other areas that the council may approve. And I gave an example of the UMD campus that's more directed at the scooter rental enterprise. The other thing I want to point out is that if you're using these electric scooters, you be, one of the items we included was that you have to be 18 years old and have a valid driver's license, was something that was included. The Article 21-1300 and forward, that is a permitting process for the company that really wanted to come in. It'd be served for any company that wanted to use these electrical scooter rental processes. I know that they had proposed a MOU, but when you get into those MOUs, then we're the contracting party, and it could be viewed that we're part of the system rather than just permitting the system. And so what we did is we drafted the permitting ordinance for the purpose of trying to cover all of those potential pitfalls, liability pitfalls and things like that. You'll notice there's quite a bit, those type of provisions within the ordinance that's been proposed. Again, a couple of changes that I noted as I was going through, it's at 21-1310 subsection 1. As far as the, it makes reference to the GPS system and allowing electric scooter rental operations to monitor their positions and restrict parking in areas of use as provided. And it should read back to that 8-1804 that designated the areas that these electric scooters could be used. Again, I've got a internal reference oversight when we're numbering it. That's at 21-1310 subsection 2. That's at 21-1310 subsection 2B. It now reads 8-1803, and it should read 8-1804. And I'd also propose that one last item be added to 21-1310, is that all customers comply with and be subject to the rules of operation as described under 8-1801, the general provisions. So those are just some of the proposed changes. Again, I think the location of where you'd like to have these electric scooters operated is something I was looking for a little bit of guidance from the Council, and we can modify 8-1804 as soon as I get a little bit more direction on that. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have regarding the proposed ordinances. So there's really two sets, one that's general application, and then one that's dealing specifically with the rental scooter operation.
All right, thank you. I've got just two quick questions. Number one, was this pulled off of some, you know, other cities that have had success with this type of ordinance?
What we did is we actually used, this is the bike ride share ordinance that you've got already, and we pulled a lot of the language that we used from there, and also my partner Joe Quinn assisted, and he also told me that he looked at some of the other cities and see what they had adopted as well.
Guess the last one would be, the area that it's going to be is going to be very important. Probably that university corridor is going to be an area from campus to downtown. Is there a group of Council members that would like to dig deeper into that? And I don't know if President Sandy, if there's a group that you would like to put together, or if you want to, you know, do that here, maybe it makes sense to dig into where the actual boundaries are going to be in, if this does go forward, and how to, you know, adjust that. I guess, is there some Council members, certainly up to you guys, if there's some that have interest in that, or would just rather have it done administratively, I guess would be the question.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I'm sure there are some Council members that would be interested in providing some input. Why don't I take it upon myself to reach out to the other Council members and see who's interested in being involved, and perhaps a meeting or two together would take care of it, if that works with others.
Sounds good. All right, any other further comments? I mean, that's all assuming, I think the first part would be the initial boundaries, then ongoing, assuming this would go forward. Any further, I guess, comments? Why don't I, if everyone's okay, I'd take Mr. Corky to add some comments on the item, if you'd like to speak on it now, sir, please.
Thank you, Mr. Wachensky. I forgive me for being a little unprepared, but if you mind if I get my three-minute timer out, I want to make sure I'm not overstepping my bounds. I had the opportunity to live in a city that actually had both Bird and Lime scooters other than Norfolk, Virginia, starting in 2015 until 2019, when I moved to Grand Forks. And I think Bird scooters are aptly named. They're nice enough when you sort of look at them far away, but once they get into your house, they can be kind of noisy and cause a little bit of a stink and a big problem. In Norfolk, Virginia, by the time I was moving away, the city was actually looking to get rid of the Lime scooters and the Bird scooters. What they found is that the ordinances, however well crafted, did almost nothing to guide the actions of those using the scooters. People would often use the Lime scooters as a means of transportation when operating a motor vehicle was no longer an option. So these people were usually inebriated, which didn't exactly help their ability to guide the scooters effectively, and typically the scooters would end up outside of my house. I lived in a residential neighborhood about a mile and a half from downtown. I currently reside at 723 Cottonwood, so I'm in a very similar situation here. It's interesting that Mr. Gostad mentioned the Bike Share Program. In terms of kind of the things or the direction I'd like to see the city go in with regard to transportation, I imagine that if there was room in the budget, the DDA might appreciate any assistance or enthusiasm or encouragement from the City Council coming to extend that program. Typically, if people are biking, they're moving their body, it's a little bit more healthy than riding a scooter. That's a local, you know, development association, it's not a private company that might not even be located in this city. I'm not opposed to outside investment by any means. Just generally, my experience has been that Bird scooters are a net negative, with the Bird scooters and the Lime scooters in Norfolk piling up all over the place. The city started to look like Times Square on Cinco de Mayo, just birds and lime everywhere. Lastly, with my remaining 52 seconds, I'm grateful to Congress, or not a congressperson yet, to Mr. Weber's comments about policing, and I would encourage the City Council with the six additional police officers to really push the Police Department to frankly make downtown a little bit safer. About seven weeks ago, my family and I were on the Greenway, and I've noticed an increase in transient and homeless populations downtown, and I find myself torn between two convictions. One, that these are human beings with incredible dignity who deserve our help and respect, and I shudder at sort of the draconian measures taken in cities like New York to make the city uninhabitable for them. On the other hand, I find myself deeply frustrated that a man approached our family, insisted that he was going to rape and kill my wife, and only withdrew from our family presence, I have a five-year-old, a three-year-old, and a one-year-old, when I made it known that I had a knife on me and wasn't afraid to use it if it came to that. That's my time, appreciate it. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corky. Certainly troubling to have to hear and deal with that, and there's no place for that in our community. And thank you for your comments on the scooters. Well, Mr. Phelan, do you have a comment?
It wasn't you, was it?
No.
Okay. I thought you was going to apologize, but all right, please.
Mayor Wachensky, members of the City Council. I think if you do do a first reading this evening, look at Council President Sandy, you can bring this to the Committee at Hall next week, and maybe have some further discussions with here, some options, if that's helpful, that'd be the meeting in between, you know, a second reading, and kind of help us flesh out any more of a working meeting, so we certainly would be willing to do that. Might be a good opportunity to give us some guidance, we can help with some solutions, working with a couple of City Council members. I think number two, the citizen had a great comment, we are going to be meeting on some of the downtown concerns, whether it's maintenance or transients and all those sorts of things. Mr. Weber has helped us organize a meeting, so we will be meeting this week on that, and if there's any outcomes we want to provide to the Committee at Hall next week, Monday, we will certainly do that, too.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phelan. I'll open up to Council comment. Mr. Weber, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the scooters, a couple points here. I've experienced the clutter caused by scooters. I stayed in a city, Ogden, Utah recently, couldn't hardly get out the hotel door because you had to maneuver around, I think there were maybe 10 scooters just randomly laying on the sidewalk. However, what the gentleman told us is that they've got a technological fix for this, and they were going to build into their system an incentive for people to park it in preferred places. I believe that there would be some way to identify the previous rider, that that's part of the technology, and perhaps we could consider some form of penalty for people who leave them in nuisance spots. I don't know how you would do that, but eh, it's something to consider.
Credit card information.
You've got their credit card, but I don't know that the scooter is in its place because the last rider did that, or if someone moved it there. I don't know how you would prove that they were in violation, but people who are leaving them at random spots, if there could be a penalty built into that, that'd be great, because as much as I'm concerned about these, we met with this UND student senate a few months ago, and their number one thing, their number one ask of us was to welcome in a scooter company, and we were hesitant to disappoint that important constituency. So they're a lot of fun to ride, and they're a lot of trouble as well. So I hope that we go into this with eyes open, and thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any further comments or motions from Council?
I guess I have a question.
Yeah, please.
So do these rules, like driving, having a valid driver's license, do they pertain to, like, your personal scooters? So if I bought my child a motorized scooter, she couldn't drive it around?
It would. As drafted, it would apply to anybody that, you'd have to be 18 to operate one of these electric scooters.
And then what is the definition of one of these electric scooters? Like, is there, like, anything that my kids can legally drive them? You know, I mean, because we have power wheels, so obviously those wouldn't be...
Yeah, and if you take a look at the term, it's at 21-1301 subsection 1 defines what electric scooter is.
What page number is that?
I'm sorry, it's on page 4, and carrying over to page 5. So it's propelled by an electric motor up to 15 miles per hour is the way it's drafted it.
So anything that goes under 15 miles an hour is...
No, it can't go any faster than 15 miles an hour is the maximum. It could go less than 15 miles an hour and still be deemed to be an electric scooter as drafted.
So a little tiny razor scooter that you buy at Walmart, the children would be breaking the law trying to drive those around?
Well, it talks about a vehicle consisting of a front wheel and a back wheel, with a platform footboard in between the wheels on which the operator stands, with an upright steering bar with handlebars attached to the front wheel, and which is powered by an electric motor propelled at no more than 15 miles an hour, so you'd have to...
So the little razor scooters are just...
You'd have to have a motor.
I haven't bought a razor scooter in quite some time, so I'm not exactly, but the way I understand it is you have to be standing up, and there's like a skateboard in between the two wheels, and you're holding on to it, and there's an electric motor that propels you.
I think the easy fix to that is adding operated on a public right of way, which most of these scooters are going to be operated on with the Bird program. A child that's riding a motorized scooter in the front yard or on the sidewalk is not the intention of this ordinance, and it wouldn't apply if we had, you know, operated in a public right of way.
All right, Mr. Sandy, any...
I'm not one to want to disappoint our student senate, but we've all been to lots of cities that have these scooters. I'm going to move approval and move this on for next week so we can have further discussion. I just don't see myself supporting this. I just don't think we should, I don't think we need to have these scooters. The gentleman had a great idea. If we want to do something, why aren't we doing more to support our Bike Share? So just my idea, but I'll move approval, just for the sake of moving this forward for further discussion.
All right, thank you, President Sandy. We've got a motion to approve. I would imagine you want to at least for now include Mr. Royal's comments as part of that approval for the next draft.
Absolutely.
Okay. Do we have a second on that for discussion's sake?
I'll second it with a quick question.
Okay, please.
So can we prohibit them from coming to town? Is there a contract? Do they need our permission?
The way our recreational vehicles are drafted is that I don't know where they'd be able to use these operationally, because motor scooters are defined as recreational vehicles, and I don't know where, within their business plan, I don't think it would fit within their business plan as to where they want these things operated.
Because they don't have the proper lighting and safety equipment, et cetera?
Correct.
I see.
And the areas that they'd be able to use these, I don't think they'd be able to operate them within our city, given our current ordinances.
So short of us revising and writing new ordinances to allow them, they could not currently come to town, is that right?
That's the way, I've got to go back to our memo, but the way recreational vehicles are defined, it includes motor scooters, and I think there are limitations as to where those can be operated, and that would then, doesn't fit, I don't believe, within their business plan for these type of electric scooters. I don't know, hopefully that answers your question.
I guess I have one additional comment. Even in your draft ordinance, 21-1310, number 15, you know, we can identify how many scooters in the fleet that they have. So I wouldn't even know where to start. Eight? That doesn't make sense. Five million? Probably not. So, I mean, these are, we're being asked to come up with concepts for the city attorney for this that I haven't even, haven't put any thought into at all, and would have no frame of reference where to go with it.
And Mr. Cavato, who is the, I'm not sure what his title is, but the company, you know, obviously would help. I think making sure he's there at that next committee meeting would probably be valuable. Do you have a comment, Mr. Gostad?
It did, and to Mr. Sandy's point is, and it goes to the point from the citizens as well, that the reason that maximum was in there was to avoid the overabundance of these scooters being all over the place. That was the thought process for including that provision.
Mr. Gostad, if we allow a permit for one scooter company, are we going to be required to permit all the other scooter companies?
Yes, and as long as they meet the requirements for a permit, which are enumerated in 21-1304, there's 15 requirements, including insurance coverages, so.
I think in advance, Mr. Gostad and I will work with Mr. Cavato to kind of fill in some of these blanks, because it's going to be important, because Bird's going to set the standard for all the following companies, and so we'll follow up in advance, have him at the meeting, but also follow up in advance, have him help us fill in some of the blanks and what's reasonable for his company and also anyone else that will come hereafter.
President Sandy, please.
Can we set a maximum, this is per scooter fleet, that can we set a maximum number of scooters allowed in our community as a total, and so once we reach that permitted number, that's all that we can have?
I'm not aware of any limitation on your authority to put in the maximum number of electric scooters within the city, whether it's one or multiple.
Sure. Thank you. All right, any further discussion? We've got a motion in a second. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries unanimously. Moving on to five, I believe that's it for action items, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, moving on to five, information items?
5.1 is portfolio management summary as of June 30th.
All right, thank you. And item six, citizen comments, make sure you've got a number of citizen comments. Again, please try to keep it to three minutes. If you're wrapping up, you know, feel free to wrap up, but she's going to list it off and step up.
All right, first one I have is Jody Carlson.
I get to be first all the time. I just have a couple of questions to clarify, so thank you for allowing me that this evening. Mr. Clummy, you and I met for coffee, and I just want to have on the record your desire that you are planning to push forward with the Uyghur Force Labor Protection Act in requiring FUFAM to receive that exemption from the National Security Protection?
Yeah, if you wish, you can.
Yeah, I agree with any company that needs to comply with that, 100%, and that's something that, if this is something that they're required to do, then absolutely, yep.
Okay. And then I also, my other question, because I've been singing the pilot song for a long time, so I just really need to clarify this in my mind so that I'm clear on exactly how this pilot works, so that you follow the state law, which is Sentry Code 40-57.1 for tax exemptions for new and expanding businesses. That's what I know thus far. If I'm incorrect, please let me know. Who is the person that works with the company in order to get all these ducks in a row? Does that start with economic development, or...
Who is that, Mr. Phelan? Is that the, so the economic development and the planning department? I know there's certainly differences in a BUT4 test, which is under certain, and then, you know, you have the TIF policy that the city normally has, and larger this pilot
pilot agreement is the same. Is there any differences to this pilot agreement and the past city attorney that was here for 36 years and how they operated pilot agreements?
Yeah, Mayor Bocinski and Ms. Carlson, you're right, this is a new and expanding business. Generally, new and expanding business applications start with the Grand Forks Regional EDC, and then they move forward through city council, because ultimately, city council has to approve that. Because this new and expanding business, as, in the form of a payment of a tax, because it would be on five years, it did need approval from both the school district and the county, and then ultimately needed a public hearing and a final approval by the city council. All of those occurred. There is a development, as part of the development agreement, the payment of a tax agreement is, is embedded in that agreement, and as per the state's entry code.
Okay, so for both, both the development and the pilot, the process is, it goes through the application process, kind of starting with the, with economic development, and then it goes through that it's approved by the city council and it's, and it's moved forward that way. It's taken a long time to get documents, so I, I just want to bring this to your attention. And you know, because the petition started with when the development agreements, or the development agreement and the pilot agreement, agreement came forward to the council and was voted on on February 22nd of this year, which is when the citizens started their petition after that fact, to petition against those agreements. So that was voted on February 22nd, okay? So, in order to qualify within the state of North Dakota for a pilot incentive, you have to put in an application with, you know, whether you do it through your local economic development committee, or that you do it through the, it also can go through the state Department of Commerce. So according to this document that I have, which I did finally receive from the, the city hall down here, this application for a pilot was actually applied for with the signature of Eric Tudorash on March 3rd of '22. So you actually voted on it before it was even applied for, okay? One of the things that must be done in order to apply for a pilot program is that, according to the state law, is that you need to have the depart, the certificate from the Department of Commerce that you are a primary sector business. So if you're following the state law and you put in the application, then you would also apply for this certificate of primary sector business, which was not granted until April 12th of this year, which is after, again, it was voted on on February 22nd. And the pilot agreement also indicates, and we know through looking at minutes and through looking at, at meetings that have gone on, that it is the total opposite direction that that should have happened. I don't know how you can vote on something that you don't even have an application for. I'm also still in looking through the state law that is required for pilot, and if you, and if you go through the application, it, it asks here, you know, does the company have any, you know, bankruptcies or liens against them, do they have? It's all the information that is required in here, that in red, I received from Sheri and Marine, we don't have those documents. Well, you have to have those documents. That's, so when I fill out this application that I want a pilot project, nobody investigates it to see, and none of the state agencies, the tax department, the department of commerce, the department of equalization, none of those have these documents. They say that that is up to the city. And also, interestingly enough, on this application, it is not even signed by Marine, which is a requirement of the state, that that document is also signed. So, you know, how do you vote on something that you don't even have, have an application nor the proper documentation in order to proceed with that? I don't understand. Can you explain that to me? And maybe it will help me quit singing the pilot song.
Yeah, I think that needing to look into exactly, you know, there's differences between whether the state is involved or whether the local tax increment financing policy is followed. In this case, as Mr. Gostad, or Mr. Fionn had stated, as it's been done in the past, it followed the TIF policy of the city.
No, but this isn't a TIF policy, though.
And I think Mr. Gostad had made that clear at the last city council meeting.
There's a policy that speaks of tax increment financing. That's the way it speaks to review. I think that policy has been utilized, not just on a, on a tax increment financing, but because it deals with incentives, it's been applied for the payment in lieu of taxes as well. I don't know the date, I can't remember the date of the public hearing for the pilot application, but I thought that that was, the pilot application was actually approved subsequently, because I think there was a public hearing. I just don't remember, recall the exact date the public hearing occurred in relationship to the, the date of the application. I can't answer that question at this point, but I know there was a public hearing because we had to publish it and provide notice to competitors and things like that, so.
Because both, and, and my point is that both the development application, or excuse me, the development agreement and the pilot agreement refer to this document, and we all know that FU-Fang is going to run fast away from the city if they don't get that tax incentive. And I believe that this is not legally executed document with FU-Fang. And, and there are people that, you know, others that are helping me work on that, but I don't, and I don't, I'm not pointing fingers at any of you, because I'm sure that you rely on that information from other sources to make sure that all these i's are dotted and t's are crossed, but, but they're not, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. Just got a couple of comments and one request. You know, over the last few months, I've been hearing a lot of different things on the news, reports and everybody, even when you have interviews and stuff, and everybody keeps comparing Cirrus aircraft the same as FU-Fang. We're talking apples and bricks. And the reason I'm saying that is because Cirrus aircraft got started in 1984 in Duluth by two Americans brothers, and they ran the company for twenty-something years before they were brought out by the Chinese in 2011, which means the background is completely different. The structure was already there, was already set up, lawyers were dealing with different things as far as acquiring the company, unlike FU-Fang, which is completely different. So when you say, hey, look, we got a Chinese company in already, the Chinese already own the company in Grand Forks, and no one said anything, completely different. If there was a way to stop it, we would have stopped it. Different things, just like right now, we're standing, because we can, as we the people, trying to stop FU-Fang. And if it was up to me, not just FU-Fang, but also any other Chinese CCP-backed company that's in the state of North Dakota, and also in our nation, because America comes first. So when you start saying, hey, look, well, we got Cirrus and other, and YWND students, and they've been coming, you know what? We the people wouldn't want to support the CCP as far as pilots too, because can you guarantee they're not becoming fighter pilots or chopper pilots in the military? No, you can't. And right now, I think we're doing ourselves a disservice as a nation and an individual by supporting something that you know that is CCP-backed. So that's my statement on that. My request is, I mentioned it two weeks ago, I'd like to be put on an agenda, I'd like to put on an agenda one August, and I'm asking the city council to either approve me or disapprove me, as far as can I be put on the agenda to have a opportunity to present some questions?
Thank you, Mr. Coachman. That hasn't been done in the past, the city council meetings, excuse me, sir, you asked a question, I'm gonna, I'll respond to you.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, the city council meetings are intended to operate city business, intended to be in the purview of the public, and we offer citizen comments. We have never put a single agenda, agenda item off for a single person in the history of the city in that manner, so they would certainly be new.
And that's why I'm asking the city council, because they have the authority to do so. They can say yes or no. It's up to them.
Mayor Bocinski, I would vote against it if that motion came forward.
Okay.
Well, definitely, what do you say?
All right. Mr. Coachman, any further-
I'm asking the city council, I'm asking each city council, can I, I understand, but I'm asking the city council a question.
I believe you've got your answer.
And I understand that it's something new, that's why I'm asking, and it is a preview to the city, because it's questions that have never been asked, I mean, asked, but never answered. And I'm asking the city council, each one of you, because it's up to you to say yes or no. That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Coachman, any further comments this evening?
I'm asking the city council on what their stance as far as-
And we appreciate that, and they'll confer and make that decision. Thank you, sir.
I'm asking them right now.
Thank you, sir.
Just tell me, do you, or do you not want me to be on the agenda?
Sir.
That is my request.
Thank you for the request.
Excuse me, mayor, I'm asking the council-
Okay, thank you, I'm running the meeting.
I understand that.
Mr. Coachman, your time is completed.
But it's the council.
Please step away from the mic.
It's the council that say yes or no.
And they can certainly reach out, anytime it asks for that, Mr. Coachman.
And I'm asking them right now, reach out, please, can I, or can I not be on the agenda for one August?
Thank you, Mr. Coachman.
Mr. Webber?
Mr. Coachman, thank you for your time this evening.
Mr. Webber?
Next, next, next person, please, Mrs. Oneck.
So basically, you guys are not city council people.
Mr. Maticek, you're next, sir.
So you're not, so you guys, why you are here? Why are you sitting in these spots if you cannot make a decision?
Mr. Coachman, please, please.
Zach. Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Coachman. Mr. Maticek, your turn, sir.
Yeah, why can't you guys just answer the questions that are due the hours?
Mr. Maticek, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. For you new council people, I'm Frank Maticek, I live at 4150 Columbia Road North. I'm gonna talk about city procedures, I'd like to talk about that a little bit. You passed a thing this evening, 412, it was about Journey Home Animal Rescue thing, and I'm not talking about that, I want to talk about the procedure that they had to go through. They're a nonprofit animal rescue organization, and I'm fully aware, Mr. Brooks will tell you, that anytime you have a, any type of animal boarding or anything, you need a conditional use permit in whatever zone you're going in, and that's fine, that is understandable. The point I want to make about it is, the hoops that they had to go through to do that was nine pages, and three pages of a conditional use permit. That's fine, that's your regulations. I think you know where I'm going with this. The point I want to make is that a foreign company comes to town, they get a PUD on a page and a half with no technicals, no conditional use permits, they get a site permit, which basically is a 370-acre piece of land with two ponds in it, and a possible place where the factory's gonna go. No accesses, no technicals, none of that stuff. Yet Journey Home had to provide a schematic, a drawing of the external property and everything that was inside the building. I don't know if you see any comparison there, I don't. And that's my point. I think there's, the city of Grand Forks, Mr. Grassler, Mr. Brooks, they do a very good job, you can't just let developers go wild, I understand that, they'll do whatever they want. Controlling accesses, all that stuff is good. And the city has done a very good job, except with FU-Fang. You've let everybody down on that one. And that's the point I'd like to make. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Maticek.
Ben Graduleski?
I think, just, I got one comment quickly, I think that the difference, and the clear difference is, is the development agreement, which is in far more detail than any PUD, and that's a two-year process of heavy scrutiny, which is nine months in right now, so I would say that the development agreement, I would take that for scrutiny long before any PUD, just under the amount of studies and different hoops that they're gonna have to jump through on that. So I would say that that is a clear difference, but appreciate your work, and appreciate your work on the planning and zoning committee.
Ben Graduleski?
Mr. Graduleski, please.
Hi, guys. We've been sharing a lot of FaceTime together lately, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry it's not under better terms. First off, with the scooter thing, I had two ideas on that. One, we can do motorized bikes, so you still have to use the docking station, alleviate the mess, or to have them provide some sort of docking station for their scooters to alleviate that problem, because it is a problem, most definitely. Onto the real issue, FU-Fang, is there some sort of fund where I can get some help with my lawyer, my legal fees? I don't, I got some legal stuff going on, is there a fund for that? No?
I don't believe currently there is, no.
Why are we hiring a lawyer for FU-Fang, then? They're a billion-dollar company. Why are we hiring a lawyer for their CFIUS investigation, their CFIUS review? That is absolutely ridiculous. I, I, you're playing, you guys are talking out of both sides of your mouths, because one hand, we're doing everything we can, the second, the other side, as soon as we catch wind that there's gonna be a CFIUS review, we go and hire a lawyer, that the city, that us, we are all paying for, for a billion-dollar company. Does that sit well with you guys up there? Does that make sense to anybody? How many other private companies has the city hired an attorney for? We don't need help with a review that does not have anything to do with us. We are not under review as a city, are we? Is that correct?
Can I, can I answer the question for you real quickly?
Absolutely.
I think that the, the difference here, and the good thing here, is originally, our senators, Senator Kramer told us that this would not apply to CFIUS, it was not something that would fall under a CFIUS review as a greenfield development. We took that at its word. A lot of people had asked, continually asked about the CFIUS. Our lawyer actually got us in a, in a position to be able to ask the company, essentially forcing them to voluntary submit for, for it by using the development agreement. So in the end, that CFIUS lawyer was the one that got us to that end result. So I would say every cent we paid for her to, to operate was well worth it, because it got us to the end solution. That was different from what our senator had originally said.
Why do we need to hire an attorney for them to volunteer for this thing?
Well, that was her expertise, she had worked for CFIUS up until November, so I think you, having that expertise was, was paramount, quite frankly.
Is there any chance that maybe we caught wind there was a CFIUS review coming and you tried to get out ahead of it? Is that a possibility?
Well, the reason that it came was partially, and they reached, the CFIUS committee actually reached out, not to the city of Grand Forks, but to our, to that CFIUS attorney, so that point would not be truthful.
Well, I think it's bizarre, and I, I just don't understand, and I don't know if that can sit right with anybody, that we have to pay for an attorney for a billion-dollar company. I can't reiterate that enough, it is completely asinine. Have we ever gone to bat like this for a private company in this town?
The attorney did not represent that company, she represented us.
We are not under review.
Well, exactly, we didn't have the authority unless we found a way to do it, which she was able to find, which I think was extremely valuable.
Furthermore, you are saying that you, we repeatedly being, sorry, let me start, repeatedly being said that we have not been told, we have not been told this is a bad idea. If you watch any news, any news, if you go search the FBI, the head of the FBI is constantly talking about how much of a threat China is. If you watch any local news, drought. American news, drought, everywhere, all over America, it's coming this way, look at a drought map. I just don't understand how many times we need to be told. I know this stuff does not specifically say, hey, you, Grand Forks City Council, this is a bad idea. It doesn't say that, but I feel like we're smart people, we can probably make some inferences about what is happening in the world right now, be it climate, water, security, all of those things. And furthermore, some of these reports have actually said the city of Grand Forks, and we're just blowing them off. I don't understand what, what the, what the thought process there is, and I wish some, some of the more open-minded people on council would take some of this into consideration and say, well, you know what, looking at what's going on in the news in the world right now, maybe this isn't such a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graduleski.
Nicole Johnson?
Ms. Johnson, please.
Good evening, Mayor Bocinski and city council members. My name is Nicole Johnson. I grew up in the grand cities, graduated from YWND, and now I am married to a farmer and a cattle rancher. A portion of our farmland is here in the Grand Forks County. Like anyone else, I am a supporter of development and growth within our community. But the idea- that a Chinese Communist Party can gain a foothold in our backyard is appalling. Whatever small amount of gain they're trying to sell us on, the cost of benefit ratio just isn't there. More jobs? The national unemployment average is less than 4%. Grand Forks is closer to 2%. More money for our crops? As someone who relies on corn production for our livelihood, it's not worth selling our American fundamentals for a small financial gain. The government is constantly preaching to the American people about negative environmental impacts, and here's your chance to shut down a foreign company who will be doing just that, doubling the city's water usage, and what about their wastewater? Fu Fang has already been cited with 30 environmental violations in the last decade, not to mention we contributing $99 million of taxpayer money, according to the website, Grand Forks website. We all know that the Chinese Communist Party has a long track record of human rights violations, censorship of religion, and free speech, not to mention they are building a digital totalitarian system to spy on its own citizens. This goes against everything we value as Americans. We must protect ourselves from the Chinese encroaching on everything that we stand for. China has currently $8 trillion in deals across 68 different countries. They are getting their hands on whatever possible, therefore strengthening their position of influence on a global scale. Grand Forks, North Dakota, is next in their line of sight. Interesting timing that Bill Gates just purchased $13 million of farmland. How much more of this are we gonna tolerate? As elected officials, we the citizens expect you to do the right thing. We the people have spoken up in direct opposition to the Fu Fang project and asked that you shut it down. In these incredibly, incredibly trying times, it is our responsibility to protect our integrity, that of our air force base, our community, and our nation. We must find our backbone again. The CCP is not to be trusted. That has been demonstrated repeatedly. The fact that this project has received substantial, substantial national news coverage and your own citizens are in opposition should be a massive wake-up call. Please do not let this go any further down the line. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Did you have any other?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
I'm a customer. I didn't get a ticket in, but I don't need one. You know who I am and why I'm here. This project should be shut down. As much advice as you've been given in the last couple of weeks, and it just goes in and out of your ears, and you don't pay any attention, you have total disregard for the citizens of this town and of this nation. What I want to know is, which one of you gave the order to interrogate, or let's say intimidate and send the police and the FBI to Jody Carlson's residence? You trampled on her First Amendment rights. Who was it? Who gave the order?
Mr. Spicer, I think it was very clear in the police report that they had made that decision on their own.
They made it on their own.
And I read it after the case, and I've read it, and I can give you the police report, so you can review it yourself.
Okay. It wasn't a directive from either anybody in this office?
No, it was not.
Okay. The officer, Officer Jennings, did it on his own?
That's exactly what...
Is there a repercussion to him for this?
This is not...
Did he get to call in the FBI?
Mr. Jennings, I know...
Do you know what the FBI, what his position was?
I do not know.
Christopher Potts. He's from Minneapolis. He is a terrorist investigator. Does Jody Carlson look like a terrorist?
Mr. Spicer...
Do we look like terrorists here?
We do not control or direct the FBI in any way whatsoever.
I didn't say that. I know you called them in. Somebody called them in. I don't think Mr. Jennings did. He doesn't have the authority. That's who was with Mr. Jennings at Jody Carlson's residence. I was told to come to the City Council to find out who gave the directive by one of your supervisor police officers. That's why I'm here.
Okay. And the answer's been given to you. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Moving on to seven, Approval of Minutes and Bills.
Seven point one is the vendor list as it's presented.
Got a motion to approve a vendor list. Got a motion from Sandy. Got a second. Got a second from Ms. Slonsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number eight, City Administrator Comments. Any comments this evening, Mr. Phelan?
I have a few, Mayor, and members of City Council. I want to thank Council President Sandy. We had the Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, and MPO meeting last week, and I think it was, it was productive, so I'm very thankful for you as City Council members. One of the outcomes of that meeting is, as was discussed at the meeting, East Grand Forks had moved ahead with a request for qualifications, and we did meet, follow up with Council President Sandy and Mayor Bocinski with our counterparts in East Grand Forks. So what we determined is to expand that request for proposals or qualifications, so that the firm will not only look at the 32nd Avenue corridor as the intercity bridge, but also Elks. Number two, they'll also work at, look at the Maryfield corridor with the interchange in that bridge. And so it will be both. We have also engaged both Polk County and Grand Forks County. They're gonna participate in the, in the selection process also. And so obviously, the first step is the selection. So I think that really the positive out of that meeting, number one, is we're moving forward and getting more answers, not only in the intercity bridge location, but also the Maryfield, that we have both counties that are gonna, are willing to partner with the City of Grand Forks and East Grand Forks on that. And so that's moving ahead. So thanks to Council President Sandy, we did follow up with him. And Council Member Slonsky, you have, thank you for moving forward with the MPO on that board, and number two, taking that spot on that. From the city administration staff, we are gonna have Mr., our Assistant City Engineer, Mr. Karinko, who's been really involved from the staff level. He's gonna be the other partner on that selection process, too. So more to come on that, and as we need to bring updates with Ms. Slonsky and Mr. Karinko. They'll be our representatives on both of those corridors that are really important. So I think it's great that we're moving forward in that vein. I will put on, from the discussion today, Mr. Gostin, I, we will, we'll put on the committee to hold the electric scooter, and we'll hopefully have some more information. We'll also invite the gentleman from Bird Scooter to be part of the process, too. We'll also send out the meeting invite on the Grand Forks, East Grand Forks Wastewater Interconnect Advisory Committee. It's part of the agreement that we have with East Grand Forks, that we meet once a year. Generally, we present the budget to the City Council first, and then we follow up with East Grand Forks, say, here's your estimated cost share based upon our agreement. And generally, that, our service to East Grand Forks has ranged between $4,000 to $500,000. And so, again, this year for 2023, it's in that similar range. But Mr. Webber and Mr. Sandy, and then also Mr. Veen, you're on that committee, and then we have our counterparts to East Grand Forks. So we meet with them next week, Monday, before the committee to hold. So thanks for your time on that. The other thing I did put on underneath City Administrator Comments, I do agree, I do not agree with Mr. Maticek. We have done above and beyond with Fu Fang USA and this project. We do have the development agreement that's right here. I did attach that. The reason why I attached it, not only the agreement that's attached with all the appendices, Mr. Gostin has also gone ahead on the back, back end of that document that's attached, the development agreement, is kind of a checklist of all the various component parts of the development agreement, where we're at. And so we're gonna obviously populate that between now and probably the end of the year and into next year. So that's kind of a guiding principle. I also did attach to, we are gonna bring 11 items to next week's committee to hold meeting. And so if you see there's an attachment, so it ranges from traffic all the way to wastewater treatment plant and everything in between. So I won't, I won't name off all 11 things. But as part of the development agreement, we are gonna be discussing those items, not only as city staff, but with our consultants. And a lot of those are, all those task orders that you approved as part of the February 22nd, moving forward with the development agreement. And then, so that will come to the committee to hold in 7:25. It'll then succeed to go to 8:01, to that City Council meeting. So lots of updates and getting to further action. And then, as you look through that summary, there's also another series that's gonna come to the committee to hold on August 22nd, and then we'll go to the following City Council meeting on September 6th. So there's gonna be a lot of activity between now and September, bringing some of these updates, and some of them are gonna lead to further conclusions and ask for us to continue to move forward to the next steps in that regard. The third thing we're gonna offer as an update is, Mr. Gostin, update us on any of the legal issues that are going on surrounding the case, too. So that'll be our, our action and updates for the committee hold meeting. So I just want to give you a heads up. We did attach the development agreement. There's gonna be a lot of information we're gonna provide to you next week, Monday, in that regard. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Moving on to nine, Mayor and Councilmember comments. Mr. Wygo, any comments this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Losalesky, any comments? Oh, gee, gotta skip Mr. Webber now. Ms. Slonsky, any comments? All right, Mr. Kavami, please.
Just a quick comment on the scooters. So I had some really good experiences with one on a campus, college campus, where they actually charged you when you used it, and you only got that money back when you locked it in an appropriate place and took a picture. It's a different company, but it's something that I'll bring to the table.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kavami. Mr. Veen, any comments this evening?
Yes, I have one quick question here, and probably for Mr. Phelan. The process you talked about with the bridge, is that still inclusive of the MPO? How do these two processes work?
Yep. That's a very good question. I forgot to also mention Stephanie Hallford, our MPO Executive Director, will also be on the selection panel. I want to follow that through with the MPO itself, too. And I think with Ms. Slonsky on board regarding the MPO, she will obviously represent us on the MPO Executive Board. But Ms. Hallford is part of the process. I think East Grand Forks was proud that they moved forward. They were asked, hey, if this is a big priority. I think they really, the win for the City of Grand Forks is we got it expanded to Maryfield Bridge, so that we can look at both corridors.
Thank you.
All right. Vice President Webber, any comments?
For months now, we've hosted citizen comments regarding the Fu Fang development. Doing so is a legitimate part of the ongoing due diligence. We have a responsibility to engage. And in our concern to, about not highlighting or amplifying voices that are even sometimes dangerous to our city, we have frequently just stoically not responded to some of the more outrageous comments. But the reality is, the level of scrutiny that the Fu Fang development has gone through has been and continues to be more thorough than any issue this city has ever considered. We, the questions that have been raised almost exclusively, almost completely, are included in the development agreement, and we continue to do our work to find answers, detailed legitimate answers to those questions. And it's going to take months to do that work. So I look forward to the report next week, at which time we'll be delving into a number of those key issues from the development agreement, because that's what we continue to do, is we continue to seek answers to these questions and to even ask new questions as, as our understanding evolves. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Webber. President Sandy, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. To further, to further Mr. Webber's comments, I think the public should know that we aren't skirting our duties of answering questions. Questions are asked and answered dozens of times. Ms. Carlson has personally sent the mayor over 100 emails, and he continues to respond to them. Mr. Coachman sends emails constantly, and he constantly gets answers to his questions. He wants to put on a spectacle. Don't let him fool you. He, the only reason he wants to be on the agenda is to make a spectacle of things. That's not what we're up to. I'll continue to answer his email. If he wants to call me, I'll talk to him. Happy to do that. I'll even put those answers in writing in my email like I do all the time, and they're public record. It's not a big deal. Don't be fooled when, when our longest-serving member of our Planning and Zoning Commission stands up and says, you're not doing as good as the conditional use permit. He knows exactly what he's doing. He knows he's wrong. He's being disingenuous, and the people of Grand Forks should know that. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy. You know, once again, thank you, everyone, for the public input, especially want to thank Ms. Johnson. I appreciated her comments and her demeanor. You know, it's a, it's a challenge. It's one that we've taken on. It's one that our federal partners are beginning to engage on, which is, which is really helpful. We've got, we're in the budget process now, which is another difficult piece. I'm working our way through that, and just want to thank city staff for their, for their work on that. With that, I'd be looking for item 10, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion, Mr. Wygo. We have a second. Nobody else wants to leave? All right, Mr. Vice President Webber seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. We are adjourned.